Good morning. The meeting of the Berkeley County Commissioners now in order. Do we have any items from the public? Come forward, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Karina Michaeljohn. I live in Martinsburg. If you need me to spell anything for the record, that's fine. Sure. First name is Karina, K-A-R-I-N-A. Last name is Michaeljohn, M-E-I-K-L-E-J-O-H-N. All one word. It's a mouthful. I know. There's a lot of words. Sure. My public concern or comment this morning is regarding the snow removal on county routes. You're all aware of the snowstorm that we had last week that closed school for four days plus a delay as well. And so in reviewing the website, I was looking for a Public Works Department about snow removal, learned that there was no Public Works Department. And then I called the office and spoke to someone who confirmed that all of snow removal is managed at the state level by the Division of Highways. And of course, the city of Martinsburg, where I live, does have a Public Works Department and handles some snow removal. But I'm concerned that this has created a pretty significant service provision gap at the county level, especially for those who are outside of the city of Martinsburg, not only for school closures because the school district is dependent on those roads to be open to safely bus kids to and from school, but also in case of an emergency, can fire and police get to those who may need assistance? Can people get to the hospital? Also, the economic effects of people being able to go to work and get an income for their families and open their businesses. So I'm concerned, I was a little bit surprised to find that there was no line in the budget for Public Works at the county level to maintain county roads. I'm aware that it's a cooperative effort between state, local governments, and at the county level to get that done. But since Martinsburg is probably going to, and Berkeley County is going to have likely more snow in the rest of the year, I'm concerned that if there's no budget for it, that what happened last week is liable to happen again. So my hope is that in the interim, because if I understand the budget in the year properly, we're in the middle of the 24 to 25 budget. So my hope is that an interim solution could be found to find funding in the event of additional snowstorms, and that this could be considered as a permanent budget line item in future budgets. I did look, my hometown where I grew up was a rural mountain town in New York, and they have a really good cooperative system between state, county, and their smaller city or township levels as well. So if there's any way that I can, you know, have follow-up with the commission about this, I would be happy to do so. But I thank you for hearing my concern and for keeping the safety and accessibility of all of the citizens of Berkeley County top of mind.
Thank you. If you would leave your contact information with our secretary on the way out.
Absolutely.
We'll give you a phone call and explain how some of this works.
Sure. I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
But I appreciate you coming in this morning and addressing this.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion to approve, oh, hang on. Yes, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay. On the purchase order, is there any questions for Tracy on the purchase order? I can't get mine to open up. No questions for Tracy? Everybody all right? Okay. We have no internal budget revisions, Mr. White? Have a change of status. New hire recommendation received from Anthony Petrucci, county clerk for Christine Ridner as a part-time clerk effective January 20, 2025 with a rate of $20 an hour. New hire recommendation received from Brian Ross, Director of Community Development for Sean Becker as a residential building inspector effective February 3, 2025 with an annual salary of $55,000. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director for Melanie Schaefer effective January 10, 2025. Request from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director to remove Lisa Valentine from payroll effective January 13, 2025. January 9th and January 2nd minutes, everybody was present, so we can leave those in. Have bond reduction for Summerwind Recreational Facility, BCP file 2410-307 tied to 2410-306, number 2304121051-18, and R01444-20. That's a grading bond. Engineering has, that bond number is 100540869, and engineering is making that recommendation. Bond reduction, springmills, PUD, lot 11, townhome rentals, BCP 2410-313 tied to 2410-312, 2303-115, and 2306-0091. Bond number 100755700, engineering making that recommendation. Have a bond reduction for Cardinal Points, Section 5, Phase 1, lots 372 to 395. That's for final plat. BCP file 2407 tied, -223 tied to 2407-222, number 2209-261, and number 2204-114. That bond number is 100711271. Engineering is making that recommendation as well. Do you have any further questions for Doug on any of those recommendations for removals No? Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. We have no correction log from the assessor this week, so that's a good thing. Okay. Yeah, we do have a cancel check from the county clerk's finance office, and that is in your read ahead. And also, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Did have a Roundhouse Foundation meeting last night. We just looked at the long-term planning goals for '25. You know, it's the fundraising on for the Roundhouse Authority and the Roundhouse in general. We talked about next year's night market that's coming up and different fundraisers we can do to raise additional funds for the stormwater bill that we have from the city now. That's quite large. That was pretty much considered that. I did go to Charleston for the inauguration this past Monday. That was a good experience, I think. Had a quick meeting while I was there with Ag Director or Head of Ag, Secretary of Agriculture, Mr. Leonhart. He assured me that we'd be able to get the soil trailer for the opening day at the farmer's market this year for, at the Roundhouse, so that's a plus, very educational tool to use. And I hope to get back down there and talk to him about more grant opportunities. It was a busy day, a lot going on. You know, it was brief, but it's good to get down there and talk to some people and set up things for the near future.
Very good.
So I too did attend the governor's inauguration. I was in Charleston for three days, took a couple of brief meetings down there, had some conversations with the speaker and some other people that are going to hopefully be in the governor's cabinet and just, you know, talked a little bit about Berkeley County's concerns and the needs of the county and just making sure they are aware of our very unique situation that we have here. Also had my first board meeting with HEPMO, and that is a board of acronyms. Everything carries an acronym out there. It's going to take me a little while to get my head around it. Spent some time with Matt Mullenex and Elaine Bartelson and Rachel Snaveley, trying to get a little bit of definition of exactly what that board does, what it represents, what the liaison position from the county commission is there to do. And so it will take me a little while to get my head around that committee, but that's really all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Woodaker?
Don't have any meetings to report on. I've got three coming up.
Commissioner Woodaker, Calhoun?
Had the pleasure of being down at the inaugural as well. Been, got to spend some time with my fellow commissioners from here during the weekend. I was very, I was very impressed with the dignity of the whole inauguration and all. I thought it was well done. Setting there with the Capitol Mall is just tremendous and amazing, and it was a great Getting back yesterday, Eddie and I were on WRNR in the morning for an hour talking about county business. And then later yesterday afternoon as well with John. I served on the NPO as well, and we had our board meeting. The Route 9 West situation, the first roundabout is supposed to happen in 2027, and that's the one at Ridge Road where Hedgesville High School is located. And then in 2028 will be the one on Harlem Springs Road is where Route 9 West and the Rutter's new location is, in that particular section, intersection. So as far as the NPO and highways, I guess everyone's heard that Jimmy Riston has been replaced as the commissioner of highways, and I got a text this morning, or an email this morning, that Todd Rumball, you know him, John?
Do not.
Yeah, is going to be the new commissioner. I don't have any details on him at this point, but hopefully it'll be a situation where we'll get more attention. Also, I've been in communication with, this week with Kevin Walker and Jack Owens from the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation. They were here a few weeks ago and toured the old courthouse. They have some interest there. They're going to be back next Thursday to meet with the museum board Thursday evening. And prior to that, at four o'clock, we're going to meet with Summer to see if we can get some assistance, maybe get some legislation passed that would help this movement from Charleston. So looking forward to that. And then this morning, Gary and Eddie and I met with Judge McLoughlin and had a very nice meeting with her and appreciated her attitude. She was wonderful, I thought, so it was a good meeting.
Very cooperative.
Yeah. And very understanding with the work that's going on for her new headquarters over at the old jails. That's it, sir.
Yeah. Had a few meetings this week. Gary and Chad and I met with representatives of Back Creek Valley. As you all know, over the last month or so, we've been able to make some movement in getting staffing in our voluntary fire departments. staffing in our voluntary fire departments 24 hours a day and seven days a week. Back Creek was not in that financial package, and, you know, they very much want to be, and we want, we want staffing in there as well. So we met with them to try and get some funding ideas, perhaps, and just listen to their concerns, you know, which were certainly warranted. So we will continue to try and find those dollars to be able to get that protection in Back Creek Valley. Also had a 911 Advisory Board meeting. They are starting an academy with 12 new telecommunications for training. They received 200 applications, so that's promising.
Even more promising is there's 18 on that list of she'd like to have, or that would pass.
That's a good thing, because those numbers haven't been there in the past. Jen Swisher, our 911 Director, is also the new State Training Committee Chairperson. She's excited about that. The 911 folks will be starting their reaccreditation this year also. And there's a new tower site that's coming to Jefferson County in Shepherdstown. That tower will also help Berkeley County in the eastern, northeastern part of the county as well, so that'll be good for all of us. LAPC, they're working on different plans for tabletop exercises, hopefully for an exercise in May. The cybersecurity and hazmat grant area are now open, those grant opportunities are now open. I just saw Bill and Kara come in from the Health Department. They now have COVID and radon test kits available for free, so if you need those, please contact the Berkeley County Health Department. And also, new to the LAPC was the number 211 Resource Connects was there, and to be able to help folks perhaps with food pantries or homelessness and any other type of needs that they may have. As Mr. Callahan said, we were on WRNR radio yesterday, and that's always a good discussion. Yesterday evening at four o'clock, I had a Criminal Justice Board meeting, and just, I'm just gonna throw some numbers out to you. In 2024, they did 23,811 drug screens in that facility. Last year, actually between, you know, part of '23 and '24, they had 773 referrals and 618 folks were admitted into the different programs that we have available. Not everybody that's recommended fits the criteria, especially if there's any type of violence, they're not, they don't want them in those programs. But there's several numbers that are impressive. The recidivism rate after a five-year period is at 26%. And the national average is around 76%. So these guys are really doing a great job over here. Maybe it was 73%, but I know it's into the 70s. So the programs that they've got the folks in, even five years out, are still holding, and folks are still healthy and doing well. Our DRC, there's 319 people in there right now. You know, last year, we started a new DUI program. We've got, 57 people have been through that particular program. Currently, we have 155 people in home confinement and 98 in community service. So when you shake all that down, not only are we trying to get people healthy, we're keeping them hopefully employed, we're keeping their families together. Another notable note is that equates to about $28,000 a month on a jail bill, and that would be about $10,000 annually. So there's lots of good work going on over there, and...
You made $10 million.
Yes, yes, $10 million.
And actually, that's per day we're saving.
Yeah, that's a day, you're $20,000 a day, President. Mr. President?
That's what we're saving per day.
Yeah, I just made, I made the wrong note there. So it's certainly paying its dividends there, and the staff is so appreciative of the new facility. They're no longer having to share a desk like they were in the past, and people can, when they come in for their sessions, can be treated with much more dignity than what they were in the past, where, you know...
More privacy.
Yes, yes. So, you know, everybody's got their issues, and we're just trying to help them, help them get healthy. So we're almost right on time here. Next is our Honorary Commissioner, Olivia Campbell from South Middle. Commissioner Callahan, if you would, please swear in. Olivia, you want to stand up? Hi, Olivia Campbell.
Hi, Olivia Campbell.
Do you swear?
I swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the Constitution of the West. I will work hard to fill the responsibilities...
Fill the responsibilities.
...of the Office of Honorary Commissioners, which I have been appointed. From the God. Stand up and tell everybody some things about you. I know you're at South Middle School, eighth grade, and here's your certificate, right there, honorary certificate for you. And just tell us a little bit about yourself and your teacher, if you would.
Thank you. My name is Olivia Campbell, and I'm in eighth grade at South Middle School. I'll be going to Martinsburg High School next year. And after high school, I plan to go to college, and I have a couple ideas of what I would like to do when I'm older, but I'm thinking about either going into law or going into, like, the historical department, being a historian.
In our meeting today, the judge told us we need some defense attorneys in Berkeley County.
Yeah, there's plenty of work for you. If there's something that you would like to inject today or have a question about, please get my attention and we'll hear you out, okay? All right, we're right on the money at 9:55. Mr. White, we have a bid opening?
Yes, sir. You do have certification of publication. It was put on the website and distributed to known vendors of interest, and you have quite interest. You probably have 20 submitters here. This is for a one-year contract with option to renew for five years. It's a cybersecurity risk assessment. We work really hard to provide and make the network and all of the computers as secure as possible. What this is, is a service that is subscribed to that in turn kind of audits what we do to make sure we don't have any holes, make sure we have any areas of need or stress. What, we have had this done historically, we've just not had it done routinely. I think we're to the point now that we need to be audited technically by an outside source and just ourselves to make sure we're doing it right. We all make mistakes, but we don't want to have something that is out there that grabs a hold of us and we end up similar to other agencies or counties or states where everything gets locked up and we don't have access. This is kind of a tool to look at what we've got and tell us how we're doing and what we should do.
And obviously, if we have a hole in our system, it could be a very, could be a hole in a lot of people having their systems, and...
Yes, sir.
An organization like this could be aware of that.
That's correct. And they would, this is what they do. These services are no different than our financial auditors.
Okay, and the first bid is for One Plus Five Risk Management Services LLC out of Springboro, Ohio. And for 2025, that price is $205,500. For 2026, $215,935. For 2027 is $226,871. For year 2028, $238,355.
Gary, how many bids did you say we received?
Oh, my goodness. I didn't count them, but it looks to be 20.
I'm on number 30.
There's a bunch over here.
The next bid is from Clifton Larson Allen, LLP. Clifton Larson Allen out of Arlington, Virginia. 2025, the lump sum price is $164,500. 2026, $169,225. 2028, $179,105. 2029, $184,268. And that is Clifton Larson and Allen out of Arlington, Virginia.
I'll tell you where the job market is, then.
Sure does. These folks are in demand. The next bid, number three bid, is from Lance Soft Incorporated. And they are out of Herndon, Virginia. And the lump sum price, setup price, is $80,000. Lump sum for 2026 is $1,323,000. For 2027, $1,389,150. I'm sorry, $1,389,150. Lump sum for 2028 is $1,458,607. Bid number four is from Tri Facta, T-R-Y-F-A-C-T-A. They are out of Pleasantown, Pleasanton, California. For 2025 is $446,406. 2026 is $468,726.30. For 2027 is $492,162,162.62. For 2028 is $516,770.75. The next bid is from Reclaimer Incorporated out of Tyrone, Pennsylvania. 2025 is $21,320. 2026 is $22,66.20. 2027 is $22,838.52. 2028 is $23,637.87. You wrestling with that? And 2029 is $24,465.19.
You do what you gotta do, don't you, man?
Only got another dozen more to go. Our next, number six bid, is Martin &amp; Yarborough, and they out of Fort Worth, Texas. The lump sum for 2025 is $22,500. Lump sum for 2026 is $15,500. 2027 is $15,500. 2028, $15,500. Eight figures, seven figures, five figures. A little bit of a dish. They're all over the place. The next bid is Maplewood Enterprises LLC. I'm not sure yet where they're from. They are out of Springfield, Ohio. For 2025, it's $216,600. 2026, $216,600. 2027, $216,600. 2028, $216,600. Bid number eight is Bulletproof IT Security Services and Division of Gaming Laboratory International LLC. And they are out of Fairfax, Virginia. The lump sum price for 2025 is $53,000, I'm sorry, $57,330. For 2026 is $57,330. For '20 is $27,58,477. '28 is $59,647. And year 2029, $60,849, $840. And that's Bulletproof IT out of Fairfax. The next one is SystAudits, S-Y-S-Audits.com LLC. And they are out of Williamsburg, Virginia. For 2025, the lump sum price is $45,000. For 2026 is $44,000. 2027 is $43,000. For 2028 is $42,000. And the lump sum price for 2029 is $41,000. The next bid is Securance LLC out of Tampa, Florida. And for 2025, the lump sum price is $77,352. 2026 is $78,126. 2027 is $78,907. 2028 is $79,696. The next bid is from Affinity Security Services of Randolph, New Jersey. 2025 lump sum price is $39,500. 2026 is $37,525. 2027 is $37,525. 2028 is $37,525. Twenty twenty-eight is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And twenty twenty-nine is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's bid number eleven. Bid number twelve is, is from Two CM Technologies LLC. Out of Annapolis, Maryland. The lump sum price for twenty twenty-five is two hundred and seven thousand forty dollars. Twenty twenty-six is two hundred and twenty-seven, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Twenty twenty-seven is two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. Twenty twenty-eight is two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Twenty twenty-nine is three hundred and three thousand one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The next bid is from Sun Plus Data Group. And they are out of Lawrenceville, Georgia. And for twenty twenty-five, the first lump sum price is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty. For twenty twenty-six is two hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. For twenty twenty-seven, two hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and ninety-two. Twenty twenty-eight is three hundred and ten thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. And twenty twenty-nine is three hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars.
Yes, sir.
I want to know what the all-time record for most bids is.
Maybe it is, huh, Ben?
I think so.
Think he's broken the record.
Tens of thousands to the billions.
Sharp as a knife.
Is this combs?
No.
Never. Usually get like four bids and they're usually pretty close together.
Bid number fourteen is Orvis Mazars LLP. And they're out of Charleston, West Virginia. They've got this broken down a little bit differently. But I will go down over the lump sum price. And then they have a per application tested dollar amount. But for twenty twenty-five, it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand ninety-three dollars. For twenty twenty-six, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Twenty twenty-seven is a hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and three cents. Twenty twenty-eight is a hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And twenty twenty-nine is two hundred and one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. The separate D A S T fee, which I'm not sure what that is, Gary may know, but. For twenty twenty-five, it's fifteen thousand per application tested. Sixteen thousand fifty for twenty-six. For twenty-seven, it's seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-three. For year twenty-eight, eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five. And for year twenty-nine is nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. It's only warm enough in here. Give me a chance. Any way you think.
All that movement you have to do over your seat. Got you working out over there.
Just chilling out here. Come out of his jacket and everything.
You just need to get a box van and just set it over there on Steve.
He's got a fan running.
Just lay it on this.
After you hear you guys sign, you just take a hand at a time and do it gradually so you don't have shocks. I got you.
Yes, sir.
The next one is Global Solutions Group Incorporated. And they are of Oak Park, Michigan. Twenty twenty-five is forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Twenty twenty-six is fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents. Twenty twenty-seven is fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eighty-seven cents. Twenty twenty-eight is fifty-three thousand thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents. And twenty twenty-nine is fifty-four thousand ninety-one dollars and thirty cents. Uh, the next one is Minuteman Security and Life Safety. Out of, looks like Andover, Massachusetts. For twenty twenty-five is forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Twenty-six is fifty thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Year twenty twenty-seven is fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Twenty twenty-eight is fifty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And twenty twenty-nine is fifty-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is bid number seventeen. This is Senin X forty-five. And they're out of Moorestown, New Jersey. For twenty twenty-five is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Twenty twenty-six is four hundred and one thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Twenty twenty-seven is four hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Twenty twenty-eight is four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. And twenty twenty-nine is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. This bid, which is number nineteen, is from Accorian. And they are out of East Brunswick ACC.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
We missed one there.
This was seventeen. Seventeen, you should be on eighteen. Got you.
Where are they out of?
They are out of. East Brunswick, New Jersey. And their name once again was Accorian. Okay? For lump sum of twenty twenty-five is four hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars. For twenty twenty-six is a hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty twenty-seven is a hundred and forty-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars. Twenty twenty-eight is a hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And twenty twenty-nine is a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Nineteen of them followed the instructions, so you knew they were good, so if one messed up, it's not our fault. No, it.
You said twenty, you're right on.
I was, I didn't count them honestly, that was a guess.
You played a lot of it there.
This bid is from. Softsages Technology out of Malvern, Pennsylvania. Twenty twenty-five is thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars. Twenty twenty-six is thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty. Twenty twenty-seven is thirty-five thousand three hundred and one dollars. Twenty twenty-eight is thirty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Twenty twenty-nine is thirty-seven thousand and thirty-eight dollars.
Melbourne?
Melbourne, P A.
Yeah. Where the Australian, oh, we can play that in Australia, Melbourne, Australia.
Bid number twenty is Anthony Timbers LLC out of Fredericksburg, Virginia. Lump sum price for twenty twenty-five is fifty-two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. Twenty twenty-six is fifty-five thousand six hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents. Twenty twenty-seven is fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Twenty twenty-eight is fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. And twenty twenty-nine is sixty thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents.
Looks like the best bids came out P A.
Now the fun begins.
P A in Texas.
Yeah, have fun with that one, yeah.
In the millions. Yeah, that one's out of Herndon, Virginia. Good figure. Okay.
Was there anything you wanted to add about the certification and publication?
I said it upfront.
Okay, okay. It's been a little.
Wait a minute. I'm Texas twenty-five minutes ago.
All right, okay. All right, uh, next up, and we're running just a little bit behind, is, uh, is Bill Kearns, the Director and CFO of Berkeley County and Morgan County Health Department. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget presentation.
Or Kara.
Or Kara, Kara Hardy, please come forward.
Lead Director.
I am not Bill, but I just wanted to briefly speak before Bill does the finance piece. I just want to formally introduce myself as the Director now. Um, I have big shoes to fill. Unfortunately, I still have Bill's leadership to help handle the large piece that he's going to present to you here this morning. Um, I just want to let you know I'm very excited about the future of the Health Department and to continue the great things that we've been doing in the community. And also, I appreciate Mr. Hardy coming over and introducing himself to the staff and speaking with all of us. And we do appreciate you representing the Health Department in the years forward. And like I said, you seem very interested and we do appreciate that. This coming year is going to be really hard for us with legislature. Um, some of the things that are coming down the pike, um, so we'll be really busy with that and also trying to fill staff positions, which Bill will also elaborate on a lot more, that, um, our county is growing as you are aware. And we really want to move with it and, uh, you know, grow with it as well. Um, one of the things I want to share with you is just for the first time, uh, we have a year in review newsletter that we're going to continue to do yearly that kind of shares some of the successes of the Health Department over the past year. And I thank you all for your time this morning and your attention, thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, welcome you to your, to your new role. A lot of people don't know exactly all the things that you all do in this community. But, but I know that during the COVID time, our, our Berkeley County Health Department rose to the occasion and did a tremendous job in this community and those efforts, you know, still remember, so thank you.
Good morning, and I promised not to take as long as it did for those bid openings. Or Steve's going to be out of his jacket. So I, um, I, as Kara said, you know, each year, public health gets under a, a tax, seems to be from legislators and not include, not including the previous legislator that's sitting in front of me. But even right within the first day or so, um, we already, in public health, have a major attack and it's on our immunizations. Executive order's already been signed stating that now we'll allow for religious and philosophical exemptions to vaccinations. One of the greatest things that West Virginia is known for is our immunization rules, keeping our children safe. It's already been signed that allows for that exemption now. So we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us. For those of us that retired are still be knocking down the doors and, and phone calls to try to keep our children's and our community safe. We, the last thing we want coming back is, is polio, smallpox and other vac, other vaccines that we take care of, providing. And that's not looking at the extra vaccinations that are good, but not required for school entry, but we want to keep our children safe. So I, I always appreciate the opportunity to come before the commission now, uh, counsel before, to be able to say thank you for supporting the Health Department in many different ways. And one of those being our wonderful building expansion that I'll talk about in a minute, um, is coming right along. I know they were probably hoping they'd have some windows in there hopefully by the end of the week because next week's going to be a little cool. But I'm sure they'll, they'll work through what they have. So this year, a, as you know, unfortunately, um, the Health Department received a twenty, twenty thousand dollar reduction in our funds that the commission provides. As you see from the read ahead materials, the fiscal year that we concluded in June thirtieth, we are no longer showing that surplus, the, uh, the COVID dollars have, have, have dried up and went away. And we've had to do some repayment of funds that weren't utilized, um, but those funds have went away. So twenty thousand we received as a reduction. To give you an idea, since we are combined Board of Health, um, based on our population, Berkeley County provides, the commission provides right about fifty-five cents per capita, based off of about a hundred and fifty thousand people in the county. With Morgan County being about, right about eighteen thousand people, um, it equate, what they provide equates out to about two dollars and twenty-five cents per capita. Now Berkeley County, another comparison, we, we provide, we pay as the Board of Health pays for the all the utilities, being electric, water sewer, um, alarm monitoring, all those kinds of things, whereas in Morgan County, those are taken care of. So there are differences between the counties certainly. In either county, we don't own the facility, we just help maintain that and pay for different things. But through savings, um, from previous years, um, from unencumbered funds, administrative costs that we've had on the, on the grants, and they, and just keeping our, keeping our pennies tight, we were able to provide right about a hundred or one point two million dollars towards a two million dollar building expansion. That's, that's, that's something to brag about. And, um, so we, we take serious taxpayer dollars and we don't squander them foolishly. We're looking to build for the future and I know you all are as well. Um, you're committed to this building the same as what we are. But, and then previously, as you know, we, we, when we moved into Waverly Court, we, uh, we had, we was able to provide about a half million dollars. So it's not just that we want to keep the money, but we are, we're, when we try to save money within our budget, it's for a reason, that we're planning for the future. We're going to be in see, we're going to be seeing with our new building expansion, of course comes expenses. We're going to, with this four thousand square foot addition that we're having built, we're going to probably see an additional about four we're going to probably see an additional about forty-one thousand dollars, additional costs when you take into consideration electric, water, sewer, additional insurance for the facility. All those things, we're going to see about a forty-one thousand dollar addition. And then we look at our, where does our money go to? We operate about a three-million-dollar budget. About two million of that budget is personnel costs. And I think that's probably pretty much with most businesses. The highest part is personnel. Of the two million dollars, it's personnel cost. And I said this when we had our roundtable meeting at the Health Department not too long ago with our local and state elected officials. About thirty percent of our personnel costs is being supplemented by grants. Those of us that live in a grant world know that that's not continual dollars, and they go away. So what do we look at if that thirty percent goes away? Many of those grants we have had, probably the longest one I can think of is our threat preparedness that we've had since nine-one-one or shortly thereafter. But what if those grants go away? Well, that staff goes away. There's not, of the twenty-three employees of the Health Department, there's not an employee there that doesn't have a certain part of their salary that's supplemented by a grant. Because threat preparedness touches every employee of the Health Department. We all have different job duties. Surely we put those in force during COVID. It was all hands on deck. Everybody did those duties. So, or immunizations, or radon, or any quick response team, harm reduction. All those positions are covered under grants. So our employees have a certain part of those. We don't want to lose any of those positions. Right now, we're struggling. We have three positions open for sanitarians. We cannot find sanitarians that will work for the salary that we have. Pretty much all of our positions are working at substandard salaries. And it's dealing with division of personnel, their salaries that we have to work within, although we do have some special hiring rates for a good many of our positions. But then it comes down to how do you pay for those salaries? We can ask to get additional hiring rates, but we have to have money to pay for it. When we look at grants and having to acquire grants, right now, it is taking approximately four to five months to get a grant. I have a grant that I submitted, just talking with down in Charleston yesterday, and I submitted on August sixteenth yesterday, and they just, or August sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. And just yesterday, I received a phone call saying, we need you to revise this one part of there. So it took you this long to tell me I needed to revise a part on the grant, and then it goes back through the process again. It is difficult. And then once the grants get approved and we're able to bill, it takes between a month and a half to two months to receive a, bless you, to receive a payment on an invoice. So we have funds that, I'm thankful we have funds in our Health Department. Those funds are tied to long-term liabilities and short-term liabilities, but at least we have funds to carry us over. But the grants, they're great to have for things that are not considered public health core job duties, but grants should not have to be, we should not have to rely on grants to do our normal daily duties. And we're having to do that year after year after year. Surely, Mr. Hardy helped with our radon grant years past that we were unable to acquire. With his help, we were able to reestablish that connection. That's great to do above and beyond, and we do. But we should not have to rely upon grants just to do our daily jobs, inspections, prepare for emergencies, immunizations, things of that nature. We shouldn't have to rely upon grants, but we're having to do that. But again, our staff, it's hard to acquire new staff members when the salaries are so low. And we even have one of our grants that just provides some additional funds to supplement salaries. It was a three-year infrastructure grant, and it's going away in another year. And then they go back to their base salary, which is really bad, unless we can find dollars to support those increases. So again, we looked at, in years past, we've had some additional dollars in our budget. But right now, we no longer have those additional dollars there because they were extra dollars, and we invested that into the future of the Health Department for this county. And I think we're sowing good seed money, and I know you are as well. So when you look at our budget and say, okay, we're giving you eighty thousand dollars this year. Well, Bill, why are you asking for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for next year? And the reason is because we are trying to get staff hired to take care of the county. We're not looking for fluff. We're not looking for sending people on cruises and giving bonuses. We can't do either of those, obviously. We're just looking to take care of the community. We're going to, we would love to be able to say we can take care of all of our job duties without having grants to rely upon. We can't. But we need to be able to pay our staff at least average salaries for this area. We need to be able to look at that, and we need to be able to hire staff that we have openings for. And so I come to you, asking you to please consider the request for fiscal year twenty twenty-six for the hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Board of Health. And appreciate all you all do and your confidence in us, and you express that often. And we're trying our best not to let you down.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Anybody have any questions for Bill?
I do. And your salary is controlled by the State Health Department?
It is.
Yeah. It's a very penny, or you can't add any.
We can request special hiring rates, like we have had to do for nurses, nurse directors, sanitarians. But even with the special hiring rates, they're still well below the average in our area that we live in.
That's the same problem with everybody else in locality paid type thing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
John?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Thank you very much for being here today. Appreciate all that you do and all that your organizations do. Sometimes the Health Department is a low-hanging fruit, and sometimes it's easily picked on. So just a few questions here. Through the state funding, are you able to utilize critical need or critical access funding for special hires? Is that within the state?
No, sir.
Okay, so they don't have anything in their hiring process or their contingencies for critical access or critical need?
No, sir.
Okay.
They provide, the state provides us its per capita funding.
Right.
And that's the only thing we received. And it's about one point two million dollars for there. And it comes out to about seven dollars and some change per capita.
Right.
But that's where our funding is, sole funding comes from.
Right, and I'm looking through your profit-loss statement here, and it shows, I guess these are fund numbers, four zero two eight four zero, private immunizations, fund number four zero two eight five zero, immunization state contract. Do you feel that with the new rules, the new, probably the new laws that are going to be put in place with the religious freedoms of to be able to waive for some of the vaccinations, will some of that money go down, or will that money stay the same?
Well, the money for the state contract is basically a grant that we write. It's not just given money. It's a grant we write and helps offset some of the cost during flu vaccination season, where we see an additional staff cost, see additional travel, because we go out in so many places to do flu vaccinations. And it covers that as well as throughout the year of providing vaccine for children's program. So that's where those funds are come from. I'm not sure if we're going to see any reduction in that. That is higher than it has been in the past for that grant. Usually, it's been around forty thousand dollars. So we were able to get that. Now, the other one that you had mentioned is where we charge, we provide services for people that are uninsured, underinsured, as well as insured. So we were able to bill all major insurance companies.
You get reimbursement from back from the insurance companies?
For the most part. Many times, what the insurance company does not reimburse, or what they reimburse does not even cover the cost of the vaccine. So there's where we rely upon our local dollars to help supplement that loss. We still have to purchase the vaccine, but while we're in contract with insurance companies, we have to accept assignment.
Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Sorry. Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Next up is Rachel Snively, Executive Director, Region Nine. Good morning, Rachel.
I was thinking that in lieu of going over all the projects that we're working on, because you all were part of our project sheet and are perfectly capable of seeing the things that we're doing there, I thought I'd do something a little bit different this time and kind of explain to you really what you're getting for your money with Region Nine. The difference between us and your grant administrators. If you don't mind, I do have a handout. I will note, just real quick, on the word document that you should have received for answering all the questions in the budget packet, there were some items that were bolded under significant accomplishments. The bolded items for the last fiscal year, the items that we applied for and that we are currently managing, the ones that are not bolded are ones that we maybe took over for the county or inherited in some other fashions. Currently, again, just a real quick statistic, we have about two hundred and twenty million dollars in infrastructure projects that we're managing currently. These are active projects. Let's not include ones that are pending application or ones that are in development. A hundred and fifty million of that money is infrastructure projects in Berkeley County alone. The bulk of that is coming to this county, and we're really thrilled about some of the, especially some of the new things that are coming up, so we're excited to keep working with you guys. So, and I've said this before, Region Nine staff are not grant writers. We're not grant administrators. We are project managers. So what's the difference? A grant administrator, the insurance compliance with reporting. But we work integrally with the engineers. We assign tasks to the team members, and we on occasion participate in selecting consulting firms and ensure that project deliverables are met on time. We also assist our government agencies with projects that are self-funded that don't necessarily have grants attached to them. And that could be assisting with your comprehensive plans or facility condition assessments. We work very closely with our on-call thrasher to ensure that they're meeting their internal deadlines as well. So we really play a key role from start to finish in the project, not only with grant and loan compliance, but ensuring that these internal deadlines are met and that things are technically executed well. So most of you are familiar with grants. Some of you may not be familiar with some of the multimillion-dollar infrastructure grants. So there's plenty of us who may believe that you can get a twenty or twenty-five million dollar loan, apply for it one day, and a week or two later, you get the money. It's not how it works. You just heard from Bill Kearns that, you know, it's taking four months for him to get money, and it's actually quite quick in the world of what we do, fortunately. So I'd like to give you kind of a real-world example of what we do for you. And I thought, what better project to highlight than the second-largest project in the state as far as infrastructure, and that's the water treatment plant. So the handout that I gave you, initiation to construction. How long does this really take? What do we do for you through this process? I'm not going to run through all this. I'm not going to read through all these pages. Don't worry. So you'll recall, back in twenty twenty-two, House Bill four five six six was enacted. Say, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and ten million dollars was allocated by the legislature to the Water Development Authority for infrastructure funds. And that was codified and funded in twenty twenty-two. So before you can even get to the Water Development Authority, you have to go to IJDC. Why do you have to do that? Because IJDC has engineers. They have the capability of doing a technical review process that none of the other state agencies can do. So we initiated the Bunker Hill project back in September of twenty twenty-two. We worked with the engineers to upload the preliminary engineering reports, complete the initial schedule. It's called a Schedule B that shows what the budget is, where state funds are, federal funds are, applicant funds, et cetera. From there, it's usually another month until we go on IJDC's technical review committee. Once that passes technical review, it's the next month before we get to IJDC's full review board. So the project was initiated in September twenty twenty-two. The engineers worked their magic. We made it to IJDC full board in March of twenty twenty-three. So right there, we have about six months at that point, just getting to where we can get to the Water Development Authority. At this point, most of the project was loaned. We had applied for a WDA grant in the amount of four point two million dollars. That would have covered all the engineering costs. A few days later, we were notified that there was twenty-five million dollars that would potentially be available through the WDA for some help of our legislators. On that same day, we resubmitted our request to the WDA, and that project was approved in April of twenty twenty-three. So from there, what happened during the gap between when that was approved from WDA and when we can go out to bid? God bless David. He put together the next two pages. You can breeze through them as you want. All these different, I don't want to say mishaps, hiccups occurred along the way. There were some changes in the loans that we had applied for. As you know, we're working on the Bunker Hill plant and the River Plant at the same time. We were told by, it was BPH. BPH was taken over by DEP when that was separated at the state. At the time, BPH recommended that the loan be transferred from IJDC to a drinking water treatment revolving fund loan at a better rate. That was being worked on with the River Plant. Simultaneously, we also had to go through the process with IJDC again because we had the twenty-five million dollar grant now that we had to revise back into the budget. So that goes through a funding committee, another month, that goes through the full board again. All these steps are going through while everyone's trying to wait and get things done. In July, the loan was finally moved for the River Plant outside of IJDC. And the engineers had been working on quite a lengthy document and file preparation for the BPH loan checklist, later to be a DEP checklist. Also in there, the DEP loan manager left, and we had new team members. So a whole lot is going on. Again, he outlined it very well. I know he's watching this video, David. From there, we got that authority to bid, and we had to get DEP authorization to bid. We had a bid opening in May. Once we got the final bid opening, there was some adjustment in the figures. We had to submit a final Schedule B again to IJDC. Between start and at this point now, we're talking about May of twenty twenty-four, there had been seven revisions to a Schedule B. I'd like to see a Schedule B. I'm more than happy to send those to you, but they're quite a pain. And here we are. We have a notice to proceed, July twenty twenty-four, and the groundbreaking October twenty twenty-four. So the project was initiated in September of twenty twenty-two. We just get to groundbreaking October twenty twenty-four. And we will stick through this project to its anticipated completion date in January of twenty twenty-seven. So in addition to working with IJDC, ensuring that all of these documents are getting in on time, we also ensure that the bids are solicited properly through DVE, that all the quarterly reporting is done beginning this month. Our project managers will. will be out on site, much like the Health Department project, doing labor interviews to ensure that Davis Bacon wages are being paid. That's done on a quarterly basis. We manage the project team, ensure everyone's doing the task that they are assigned to. The project teams, DEP, WDA, the Water District, the engineers, the attorney, et cetera. We also do all the invoicing for the WDA and the loan. Those invoices, we've done three pay packets so far. They are between 70 and 80 pages long. They include notifications that everything is done in compliance with BABA, in compliance with Davis Bacon, includes all of our invoices, our expenditure schedules, et cetera. So, it's quite a process. It's quite a lengthy process. Nothing happens quickly here. And we help facilitate all of these partners working together to ensure not only grant compliance, but that things are being executed, should be. That's what you're getting, that's what you're getting for your, for your money. And, you know, this coming fiscal year, we did have an assessment increase and that was approved in June of last year in order for us to retain a second project manager, Suzanne Henderson, and also have an administrative assistant. We've never had one before. You can imagine what it's been like not having someone to help with payroll because we have to do all of that internally as well. We don't have a finance department, nothing like that. So, right now, the assessment's going to be a dollar fifty-five per capita, bringing our request to Berkeley County at 184,334 annually. If anyone has any questions about-
Was that again a dollar fifty-five you said?
A dollar fifty-five per capita. And you'll notice, so we pay, you do the payroll processing for MPO. He has his own board that sets his own rates and they have their, well, obviously, their board also. That sets his own rate and that sort of thing. That's why his ask is included in ours because it's money on his behalf. So, I did send Penny and I know she updated the project sheet because too much has changed just from when I submitted the budget request form to yesterday. So I wanted to make sure you guys had an update on everything that we are working on within any of the communities. And you can ask questions about what any of them are doing, what the status is on the project. And we're happy to be with you and answer any questions and look forward to continuing to work with you in, for a different area.
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, thank you, you know, from, from the commission for the work that I've, I've really been involved with, with Gary and yourself, with the park in Inwood in particular, let alone the really huge dollars that you've been working with, with our Water District. You know, those are really important projects in this community, especially the water. Those are big deals. And, you know, but as I go down, you know, your project list there, it's, it's quite impressive. I will say that. And I just want to thank you for your work that you do and how hard you work. And you have a great team there.
I really do.
Yeah, they, they're, they're always spot on and they, they work really hard. They, they communicate well. So, all those things make, make you all very successful and makes us successful. And not just us, but our entire region. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify then, but that, that request you had of 211,000 does include the MPO-
MPO.
Well, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
John?
Oh yeah, just a few questions. So, first of all, Rachel, thank you very much for everything that you do and your, your team does. Most people don't even know you guys exist. They have no idea what you do. You know, before I got involved in, in politics and locally, people had no clue what Region Nine was or what you guys even do. You guys really are the managing firm that really makes sure that the projects are staying on time and on budget and making sure the bills are getting paid. And, and so we appreciate what you guys do. And if you guys didn't do what you did, then these projects wouldn't get finished. I've worked with Rachel a lot and last in my legislative past with being a board member of IGDC and working very closely with WDA. And those are very daunting tasks of trying to get those dollars to the projects, to get those, the final drawdown and get through all those hiccups. So, thank you for that. Just one quick question here. In your income, you show that you have a project admin fees. Now, as your, as your projects draw down, because we know that a lot of these projects are going to draw down because the ARPA money's gone and the CARES money's gone, will your admin fees draw down also or do they stay constant?
No, so our, I mean, our-
In your region?
Yeah. We have 30, 30,000 budgeted for admin fees. And there are some grants and some, some loans that we're able, grants primarily, that we're able to allocate. Like the Bunker Hill plant, we can trust within that grant.
Right.
It fluctuates year to year.
So, the amount of grants that you're, that you're working on is, is direct representative of how much money you're drawing down?
Yeah, and there's a lot of grants that we work on. For example, the land and water grants for parks that we don't, you know, there's no fees. Yeah, there's actually sadly the majority of the projects that we work on, aside from the water and sewer, hopefully maybe broadband. We'll see as that comes to, but they don't allow for administrative fees. But this fluctuation, we don't-
Well, thank you for being here today.
Okay, Rachel, unless somebody else has any other questions?
President, may I, please?
Oh, absolutely.
So, when it comes to Region Nine, and you know, Rachel, David, Suzanne, Jennifer, and the young lady with rock star hair, what's her name?
Josephine.
Josephine. We've been involved, you know, you didn't talk much about the 18 million dollar grant that they're helping us with, with broadband expansion, the park. But there are tasks and functions that those people do. And she mentioned if you wanted to ski the Schedule B, what is that thing called?
Yes, Schedule B.
Shoot me. And, you know, we don't have that skill set internally. They pick it up and run with it. We don't have to do anything. Rachel just says, I got it, and they're finished. So, from me who is involved in a lot of these things, everybody in your team, they're worth a million dollars and thank you.
Thank you so much.
That doesn't mean you're going to get a million dollars.
I've heard it here. It's probably, it's being recorded.
I just want to make that clear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel.
We'll do whatever can to help you, believe me. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Michael Withrow, WVU Extension Office. Good morning, Michael. I usually call you Mikey. I usually call you Mikey.
I think I'm in trouble. No, it's been a very busy year for extension. We are still a one-agent county for the time being, at least until Monday. Really excited about that. Last year when we reported, Mary Beth was on her way to retirement. She officially retired in March, April. Due to budget cuts at the university, we had to wait to leverage some Board of Ed dollars to get that second agent back. I'm very much a, give me some instruction and I'll go out and try to conquer it kind of person. The advice we got last year was to ask the Board of Ed to fund a little bit more of that money. We were able to secure an additional $25,000 to cover the agent match for the ag agent, as well as a partial match for the FCD agent. So, like I said, Monday, we will start with an ag agent, Ryan Snyder. He's a local kid, grew up through 4H and FFA at Spring Mills. And we should have interviews for our families and community development agent that we share with Jefferson as early as April 1st. So, that was kind of the big push last year was knowing kind of a timeline of when we could get those people back in the office because we haven't needed really any significant increases in funding because of me being the sole agent in the county. We do still have a nutritional outreach instructor. She works a lot with the senior center, Bethany House, a lot of different organizations in the county to provide nutritional information to those low-income, high, kind of high-density, high-poverty needs. This past year's kind of been a roller coaster as far as 4H. We are officially surpassed our pre-COVID numbers, so we have 600 registered 4H members back in Berkeley County. Suzanne and Bernadette, we are very thankful that the commission provides those kind of assets to our program. They are kind of the sole people that do all the organizing for us. Without them, there would be no way. That is our biggest ask with our budget is supplying those two amazing individuals. So, we're very thankful for that. Love the new building. It was a process to get that kind of out from the top floor. We're very thankful for it to be put on the ground level. Of course, storage is always a thing. We have more stuff, I think, than, you know, anybody else because of 4H. Really excited this year. We camped with, we had 23 open spots in three weeks of camp, which has not happened. We can camp max about 450 4Hers our three weeks of camp in June. This year, we were only 23 spots for being completely full. And some of those were spoken for and then they either got sick or were sent home, various different reasons. One thing that we spoke about last year, HD asked questions about sending kids to state and national events. This year, we took 43 kids to state 4H camp. That's up, that's about twice as many as what we've taken in the past, which I was really amazed to do. I had the opportunity to direct Alpha One, which is our state 4H camp at Jackson's Mill. So, I figured if I was going, I was going to take a load of them with me. So, we took 43. Another amazing opportunity that we had this year, two of our youths were selected to serve West Virginia, out of the eight total, as National 4H Congress attendees. So, they were able to represent our county and our state at a national level event. With one of them even getting the recommendation to go on and serve on the board. So, she's in that application process now, page not. She's a Scrabble Scrambler 4H'er out of Spring Mills. But she's going through the interview process. In about a month, she'll figure out if she made the national board or not. So, some big achievements in 4H. As far as ag goes, we're still doing soil testing, still keeping up with our plant sales. We have a great master gardener program, have about 75 people in that. We're still holding strong with our COS members from our FCD unit. Though we don't typically have agents under those parameters, we're still keeping those club active. We actually just met with the county council on Monday. There's about 48 of them and they are very, you know, there's 48 of them, but they, I think there's 120 spirits when they all come together. Really notable thing we held in April was the regional kind of COS conference. So, we were able to bring about 200 individuals from nine different counties out. Have a full day of workshops, speakers, served them much here in downtown Martinsburg. But definitely excited for another full year 4H ag and FCD. Really thankful for the partnerships with the commission. This year, we partnered with Aleah Tucker, of course, for our trunk retreat. We had over 1,000 kids come out to the fairgrounds, had 72 different vendors set up. And I'm not going to lie, we just topped county at 1,000. So, I think we had more than that. That's where our clicker went to and that's where we stopped. Also thankful for the partnerships that we've started to fund with Robbie Blair. HD, you suggested him last year as far as working with Main Street Martinsburg and down at the Roundhouse. We've started to supply some STEM kits, different activities that has a presence. I think one of the things that we always wonder is like where, you know, what does the commission get from it? It's funny, the logo does go on all of our stuff as a major funder of our projects. And it was funny, we didn't realize until Aleah joined kind of on our team there, we've been using the wrong logo for about 10 years. So, it was nice to get that updated, if nothing else. But it was really interesting. We were like, no, that's the logo. And she's like, no, that's not the logo. So, glad to get that fixed finally. Very interesting to know there is apparently a Berkeley, Berkeley County, South Carolina. So, that's where we were heading. So, but we did, yeah. And that was before I was here. Usually we'll take plenty of things. That was before I was here. So, we did have an increase this year in our budget due to adding that second and third agent, hopefully by, like I said, April 1st. Travel and supplies goes up a little bit. And that's just to account for the programming work that they're going to do. And again, not all of the programming dollars come from the commission. Where it's also kind of matched from the Berkeley County Board of Education through the levy.
I mean, that's, you're, that's a rather minimal request, a difference from last year to this year.
Materials and travel.
Yeah. So, you know, Michael, you know, you, you guys, you know, you do tremendous work. And I think the thing that I really appreciate and respect out of it is, is that in your programs, so many of them are generational.
Yes.
You know, you got grandparents, great-grandparents, you know, their children and great-grandchildren and all these programs. And it just gives, gives children another opportunity to do and get involved and learn life skills, responsibilities. Just really gives them great opportunities. Not everybody wants to be in the band. Not everybody can be an athlete, you know, not, you know, not everybody wants to, to learn about farm work, you know, or, or ultra work, you know. So, you, you guys do a lot with a lot of children. And thank you all for what you do. You do, you do a lot of good work.
We're really excited. We're actually, our 4H STEM team, just one grand champion for the state of West Virginia for First Lego League.
Wow.
So, the third week of April, we're taking them to Houston to compete at the international competition there.
That's a big deal.
So, you spoke a little bit about farm work. It, it amazes me what 4H has become. When I was in 4H, I think we just showed livestock. That's all we were in it for. But having the reins of the program now, we have probably two, probably 60% of our total kids are not involved in livestock. We have one of the top-rated shooting sports program in the state. We have the top-rated Lego League teams in the state. But it's really been amazing to kind of see that shift and change and see what our kids really are capable of with those different programs.
What was your number again? How many in 4H?
We have 613 in 4H and then we reach about 4,800 in the school system through one-and-done STEM teaching.
4,800.
4,800.
4,800.
Yeah. We take in all of the, and I'll be honest, this is where a lot of the kind of dollars for supplies goes. We take all of the STEM principles that are in the provided K-312 through the Department of Ed. We make specified kind of STEM kits that are grade-appropriate. We work with Miranda Ralph, pretty much anyone at the board that will listen, to get those kind of accepted under those standards. And as teachers need us, they can request us to come in. So, one day we'll go in and we'll talk about electricity and how to build circuits and they'll build flashlights out of copper tape and popsicle sticks and a diode, all the different things. And then just last week, we were talking about plant cells and how they grow. Each kid got to make a little sock buddy, is what we call them. And you can measure how high the sock hair grows and talk about the life cycle of a seed and where their food and fruit comes from. But that STEM education is a large component of what we do out in the community day-to-day.
Anybody having questions, additional questions from Mikey?
You're being very well prepared. That was a lot of information very quickly.
We try to be, it's, we just finished our file review in December, so it's all on my mind right now. So, but very thankful for the support of the commission. It's always been wonderful to have the support. Again, providing Suzanne and Bernadette is our biggest asset. They are pretty much the face of extension and it's a, it's an amazing partnership that we have.
No complaints about your new headquarters?
Just needing more stories from you.
Which is an ongoing thing. We think we get ahead and, as I said, getting more people in the office is a blessing and a curse because now I got to clean up their office. Because right now, one of them, we use one of them kind of just to hold. If you're on Facebook at all, you'll see I try to collect like different drives for community needs. So, we just finished the toy drive for the Martinsburg Initiative. We had about 700 toys come in. So, up until the last week of December, Ryan's, which is our new ag agent's office, was completely filled with like Nerf guns and Barbies. And so, you walked in, you couldn't have sat anywhere. But it, you know, finding that kind of space is always a good problem to have.
Where is, where is your new office?
750 Baltimore Street.
Add it to Roy's.
Oh, okay. The front half maintenance is right behind us.
Gotcha.
I do have one question. On the Lego League stuff that you say you're doing, is that just basic Legos or do they actually do like the electronic Legos and all that kind of stuff too?
So, they actually build a stock model. So, what happens is essentially there's two, there's an eight-foot by four-foot game board. And it has all the different black lines that set off sensors within the robot. And believe me, this is probably the least versed program I have. But essentially what happens is they build the stock body out of original plastic Legos. And then there's an additional kind of creator builder set that they actually use. They have 10 commands that they can build into it. So, each, they have missions on the game table. And essentially what it does is they have to code how many feet or how many inches, how many nodules, whatever the sync is. One of them, for example, is they have to go out about two feet, turn right, go up about four feet, turn right again, so make a square and hit- about four feet, turn right again, so make a square, and hit a trigger to drop a little man from a post, and they score 80 points. And that doesn't sound a lot, but our kids are scoring about 600 points per game. Which it, it, it doesn't sound like much, but I promise when they do it, it's a lot more impressive than me talking about it. But, you know, they're coding, they're learning how to run these simple machines. It's actually got backing from Blue Ridge, their kind of Technics program. So they're, where they're building lines for manufacturers to do different things. Essentially, it's a modified version of that.
That's awesome.
It's a very, every Thursday, every Wednesday, they have practice. So if you ever want to see.
Where's that at, at your office?
No, we, we're very fortunate to use St. Luke's Parish.
Okay.
So they have given us pretty much free rein over the parish's house. So we have three different game boards set up. We actually have about six different teams this year. It's our second largest 4H group.
Great. Well, thank you for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Keep them kids busy, keep them out of trouble.
We're trying to keep them out of trouble.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a, a quick break, and we can get a picture with our honorary commissioner so she can get back to us. Okay, all right. We're back in session, and next up is Kristy Bentley with the, she's the Finance Director for Bethany House. Good morning, ladies.
Absolutely.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Bunny Shaw. I'm the Director of Services and the Licensed Social Worker for Community Networks at Bethany House. Community Networks, Bethany House is one of the umbrella spokes off of the, off of Community Networks. We have other programs, and Kristy can let you know about the other programs. But Bethany House is just one of the spokes off of Community Networks. Trucee Schumate is our Executive Director. She's ill at this time. And of course.
This is Kristy, President of the Board.
Stacy is back there. I've been at the Bethany House for 37 years. I was spearheaded, the, another agency spearheaded to get the Bethany House on John Street back in 1985. Eighty-six, we opened the doors, and it was called John Street Shelter. We decided to change her name in 1988 to Bethany House. So people, so for the children, so they wouldn't be ostracized at school, because once they used John Street Shelter, everybody knew they were in the shelter, they got bullied. So, but that's the lore history of Bethany House. Bethany House is a homeless shelter for single women and women that have children. Right now, we have 12 children and 20 women. We are full. We stay full. If one person leaves, another person comes. We provide case management, which I do, we budget, we do how to do resumes, how to look for housing, how to acquire a job. We do everything there. And we also help, have help from the Extension Center, which they have a worker that comes and does nutrition class. We also have a relationship with the Berkeley County Health Department, and we also have relationships with other agencies that come to the shelter to provide care for us. We're here today, of course, to speak about money. We are really in a big problem right now. We've not had this problem for years, but now we do. There was an agency that took over the grants, and they chose to give our grant, which was a good budget, to another shelter in Jefferson County, and they don't have a shelter built. So this is why we're here now, why, this is why we're here now. We've had a lot of success stories come out of Bethany House, that people are in permanent housing, they have bought houses, they're now self-sufficient, just because they had a place to go and process their life. We are proud to say that this Christmas, they, the agencies in the area and different people gave us so much things for their children. They were over elated about the things they gave. And it was like wonderful to see the children's faces when things start coming in. We also got a group in Shepherdstown that gave us gift cards for the ladies. So they had a nice Christmas this year. But we're here because we want to stay open. We have to stay open for the community, because the homeless population is growing in Berkeley County. We're seeing a lot of people coming in from different states. Maryland, Pennsylvania, Georgia, Florida, Chicago, just all over, because they heard there were plenty of jobs and housing in this area. So they don't mind coming in and spending 200 and some thousand dollars for a place. However, most people can't afford. The rents right now are 1,000, 1,200 for a one-bedroom, 850, and it goes up. And the jobs in this area, of course, you have to make enough money to pay for these apartments that they get. But they're willing to do the work, but they need a place to stay in order to do that. We are faced with possibly telling people they had to leave the shelter in the dead of winter. And that broke my heart, because who wants to see people on the street in the wintertime with their children? This is something that we, all of us, including Teresa, talked about, because we did not get the money that we were going to get. Thank God for Nancy Strawn and the City of Martinsburg, and also for United Way and other agencies that helped us to be where we are right now. But we're here to talk money. I'm not the financial person, but Kristy is, and she'll tell you the financial part of it. But I can tell you, it takes about $30 a day to feed or to house someone in the shelter. So if you have 32 people, times 30, that's how much it costs a day to house someone. And there are people living in tents, because Bethany House is always full. But they're living in tents because they don't want to come into the shelter. That's hard, because they have children living outside. And our main goal is to make sure that families, women and children, are safe in our shelter. So we really appeal to you to help us stay open, so we don't have to tell people they have to leave the shelter, because we don't have the funding. And that's what it came down to. We have a lot of things going on, a lot of plans are of trying to help people be successful. That's our, you know, have people go from square one to hopefully square five in a short amount of time they're in the shelter. We started out, when we first started, there was a timeframe of 30 days to look at someone's case. That is still the thing. But you can't do anything in 30 days. You gotta get accustomed to the shelter in 30 days. Once they get accustomed to the shelter, in 90 days, they should be able to be out looking, getting a job and looking for housing. And a lot of our clients are working right now. They're really working. So it's really hard for them to, I don't even want to think about telling someone they have to leave the shelter when I know in my heart, they don't have a place to go. But I'm gonna bring Kristy up, so she can tell you about the financial end, because that's not my expertise. I can tell you about the people and what we do at Bethany House. If anybody would like to have a tour of Bethany House, please call the Bethany House and let us know. I'll be glad to bring you in, let you see a tour. Because we hold 32 people, we have two dining rooms. And we have a commercial-sized kitchen that looks like a restaurant. We have a commercial-sized thing in the kitchen. So it's really built for people to, to have a better life temporarily, until they get up on their feet. We have room upstairs, we have a full handicap room on the bottom floor, handicap with a handicap bathroom. And we have beds upstairs that all together, to hold 32 people. Do you have any questions about the Bethany House before Kristy comes up?
Thank you. Thank you for what you do in our community.
All right, thank you.
I don't want to throw a lot of numbers and data, and, you know, we track all that. I will say, about 72% of the people who come into our shelter never return to our shelter. So they exit successfully and maintain stability in their life and in their home. So my, our biggest concern is with losing the grant, we have lost $200,000 of our funding. This is the first time that Community Networks has come to you guys for assistance. We are the only shelter in the Eastern Panhandle that takes women and children. There's some cold weather stations in Jefferson County, but they only take adults. As Bunny said, we have 12 kids in shelter today, as of today. Thinking about tomorrow or even next month, saying to kids, you have to leave. And not only that, but CPS is probably going to be right around the corner to take you from your mom, because your mom cannot provide you with a stable house. The need is huge. It's, like Bunny said, we're anywhere from $30 to $35 per day, per woman or child. That provides them with everything that they need, from their hygiene to their clothing, their food, everything that they would, that we all need daily to live. We do run our shelter as family style. We try to treat everyone as family. We serve all of our meals family-style, sitting down at the table, passing food. We do this to create an environment where they feel safe, where they feel welcome, and where they feel that they can pick their lives back up and get on their feet. Last year, we served 435 individual people. That was 339 women and 96 children. Ninety-six. To think of 96 children who most likely would have been put into the foster care system in a year's time, and, and that system being overwhelmed is so hard to think about. So every day, when we struggle with how are we going to keep the door So every day, when we struggle with how are we going to keep the doors open, because the state has taken funding, or things are just so much, we think about those kids. We think about the kids and the fact that their lives are already torn upside down. They're torn upside down. They're staying in a room with strangers, with other kids. They're eating when somebody tells them to. They're snacking when somebody tells them to. They are having to clean up shared spaces. They have to share bathrooms. And these are things that most people have never experienced. And to do this with your parent and feel secure is, is our, that is our goal, is to make those kids feel every day, when they leave to get on the bus to go to school, when they come home, we're still going to be there. We're still going to be there. Their moms are still going to be there. Nobody's coming to take them. They're not going to have to go somewhere else. So we come today begging for money to continue this. If we aren't here, I don't know where the kids will go. The adults, the women can go to the cold weather shelter in Jefferson County, but they can't take their children. There's no safety in those places for children. So right now, we are short the $200,000 that we lost from the state. And we are coming to you guys, asking if you would help to fill in that gap and continue to offer this service to our county and our city and all the women who need us. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question right out. I know that I had the opportunity to work with Penny Porter with United Way last year, and we did make several phone calls, you know, to Senator Rucker in particular, that assisted in getting some assistance back into your facility. I think that was in September.
We've been continuing to work on that.
Yeah, so, you know, and that was a grant that you've been receiving for over 30 years. So to all of a sudden not receive those funding, I know was very difficult. But, you know, I could not truly imagine the children and the women being put on the street at that time with no place to go, no shelter, no, no direction. So it was truly, even though I played a very small role, and it was, it was a privilege to be able to help get the necessary phone calls and numbers and conversations to help get you, get that settled and get it squared away. But moving forward is still an issue.
Well, even now, it's not completely squared away. We've still not received a grant agreement. We still have not received any funding. So for the last six and a half months, we are still riding out hoping. Now the BH, the Behavioral Health Services claims that they are going to give us the funding for this current year. But again, we have not received nothing but a word that we are going to get a grant agreement. It's put a tremendous strain on our cash flow. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that next month, we may still not have to close the doors, depending on if they come through with that grant, and how quickly they start to reimburse us. We went on their word to continue to stay open, so that we weren't putting the women and children out. And we will continue to do that until every dollar dries up that we have available. And I keep hounding them daily, you know, where is the grant agreement? When are we going to get it? But I do know they have no intention, the state has no intention of giving us that grant back, even after this fiscal year. And I would imagine, the state has brought in the West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness to oversee that grant. And they pooled their funds to do permanent supportive housing and things like that. And I think the state's trying to get away from the shelter setting. Haven't heard that by word, but we all know that shelter settings are not ideal, but they have to be used. They have, we have to have them. There's not enough housing for everyone, and not enough affordable housing, but there's just not even enough housing for everyone in our community. And so shelters, I can't see a day where we're not going to need a shelter, and especially for children. The children are, you know, as adults, we can all make decisions and kind of live with them. But when the kids are the ones who are caught in the destruction of that, I think it's important that we, that we focus on that aspect, and the fact that we can't have children homeless at this, at their, at this age. And, you know, I was just watching this morning, and cleaning the snow up on Queen Street, and just thinking, you know, if these kids weren't in the shelter, where would they be? What would they be doing? Parents are working. Moms are at work, trying to get back on their feet. Kids aren't doing what they're supposed to, and there's no structure. There's no structure to get them to school. There's no structure to get them the help that they need after school with homework, or, and those are things that we offer for them. So we just survive on a wing and a prayer every day, and know that we're trying to do the best that we can.
Thank you for what you're doing. I know your heart's into it. Absolutely. Have I have any questions?
I have a comment. Over the years, I've been approached by several people that needed a place to go. And I've talked to you, Mrs. Shaw, many times over the years. On some occasions, we're able to house the people that we were trying to help. And you were always professional. You were always courteous and kind. And you always return my calls. And then recently, in the last few months, there was another situation, and there wasn't room for them. And I recognize this as a commissioner. In Berkeley County, there's a lot more space for homeless men than there are for homeless women. And usually, the homeless women are the ones with the children. And so it is a real dilemma for our community, say the least. And I'm very disappointed in the fact that the state can't continue to contribute with the, with the position they're in financially, with surpluses and all of that. I don't understand why that money's not going to be there in the future. But I know this, there is a need. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate what your staff does to help these people out. The one young girl, several years ago, stayed there for several weeks, and then she finally got on her own, and now she's doing well. And it's because of you guys.
Yeah, I always, I always say, the 72% are our poster, because they are the ones who take this step and utilize it to their fullest advantage, get back and become stable. And that, we couldn't ask for any better than that. And for Bunny to be able to walk them and guide them through that, and to help them to become stable, some who have never seen stability in their whole entire lives, have now provided stability for their own children. And that's a, that's a gift to see.
Anybody else?
First of all, I'd like to apologize to you as failing as a legislator. When I was in that legislative role, Commissioner Gokner reached out to me, and I did everything that I could do. I was kind of in a lame duck-type situation, and I just didn't have a lot of influence at that time. So first of all, I'd like to apologize for that. Secondly, I can't make any promises of what this commission can do, but I will promise you that I will work with you. I want to give you one of my cards. I promise you that I will work with you and every one of our legislators in Berkeley County to try to do something with that funding. I think that it's very unfair that your funding was pulled out from underneath of you, and it was promised, and you received it for 30 some years. And if the state's going to change directions, and maybe their business plan has changed, and how they're going to do that, then at least you should have been given an opportunity to plead your case, or at least some heads up. So all I can promise you is, I will sit down with you and your team, and we will pull in every legislator that we can pull in, and we will be as loud, they will be as loud for you in Charleston as they possibly can. Thank you.
It seems like the older shelters took a hit. Raleigh County, up in Morgantown, the shelter, these are shelters that were doing good, and they pooled their funding. And my boss, Teresa, wrote a good grant. They told her she had the money, and then told us that she didn't write a good grant. After, they told her she wrote a good grant, then said, "You didn't write a good grant." And they gave it to Jefferson County. So we've tried to do what we can do to keep people housed. My fear is for the children. I have empathy for these people that's in the shelter, because they just didn't get up one morning and say, "Oh, I'm going to live in a shelter." Their situation had to get really bad for them to come to a shelter. We appreciate you all. We thank you. And it's a blessing to be here today, because I got to hear, I knew some of the people that were up front, some of their, what they do. And it just amazed me that we have such talent and such good people in Martinsburg, in Berkeley County, that's willing to help people. So this is one of the reasons why we're appealing today, because I know the public doesn't know that those children are going to be on the street. And if they did, they probably would step up and say, "Oh, no." But we don't want that to get out, because if the children are here, that they'll be upset. Then they'll go to school and tell the children in that school, "We're going to be homeless, because the shelter's closing." That's what was said on the street before. And so we thank you this morning. We thank you that you had a listening ear. We thank you that you were open-minded to listen to what we had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Next up is Robert McHaffey, Chairman of the Berkeley County Museum Commission. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Very pleased to be here. And President Gochnauer, congratulations.
Thank you.
And to Commissioners Boyd and Hardy on your elections. Good to see you. I, driving over here, I was, and actually, after the 4H presentation and what I recalled when I was here last year, representing the Berkeley County Museum Commission that you created as, under statutory authority by our state. And I was thinking, we'd only, we're the new kid on the block still, and Gary and I have talked about that a lot. And I was thinking, we had only been meeting for a few months, and it was time to build a budget, and come before you, our county commission, and present that budget. And frankly, at that time, we were still trying to get our sea legs. We were trying to figure out what the wishes were of the commission, while when we were created, it was clear what your goals were and what the state mandated for museum commissions around West Virginia. And I'll be frank, I mean, I was a little unsteady coming here and trying to build a budget with the commission. But we're grateful that you decided to give the commission $25,000 to sort of kickstart our efforts. And we, since then, have had members of the commission make personal contributions. So we've been able to build a little bit on that $25,000. But we have very judiciously not made any expenditures up to this point. And that is clearly because we're looking to you as the commission for direction as we move forward in identifying a location and some of the parameters for the Berkeley County Regional Museum. And I want to thank Commissioner Boyd. He has been available, attends our meetings, contributes in ways that have really helped us move forward. And I also want to recognize the other nine commissioners. You should congratulate yourselves. You've put together a terrific group of people that are committed. They have varying backgrounds and experience that all add to the work of the commission. And they're very committed. We've had 10 meetings over the past year. And we've always had not only a quorum, but most of our meetings, all 10 commissioners are present, and they're engaged. And they read advance briefing materials that are sent out. So they come to the meetings prepared. And I don't see any of the commissioners here, except Mr. Umstead. And Matt, as our outgoing vice chair, has done an extraordinary job with the commission, as far as information and guidance. And that connection between the county and the commission through Matt has, has really moved us in the direction that we're in, and where we're going. So I know our time is brief. Before I cut into our budget, you have our proposal with the numbers. And I want to acknowledge that President Gochnauer, Commissioner Catlett, Commissioner Boyd have all been very engaged in our meeting, particularly the one that we recently had at the Old Courthouse with Shenandoah Valley Battlefield District, which is a partnership that we're really looking to build. So before I really give you an overview of the budget, do you have any questions? Did anything rise to your attention as you were looking at the numbers or our overview from the year? I just want to make sure I cut to where your interests are before I walk through the numbers.
I just want to say I'm looking forward to the meeting, your meeting next week with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield people will be there. And I hope to be there as well. And I talked to those folks, in fact, yesterday about that.
Oh, good.
Looking forward to that.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. We're meeting on the 23rd, 7 o'clock, at the Berkeley County Development Authority, and have invited our friends, and looking forward to having them come and join us. That meeting, and those who were there, Mr. President, thoughts about that gathering? You know, we were there for going on two hours, walked the site. Mr. Boyd and I were hanging out on the roof.
And Jack won overtime that day, so.
Yeah. It was a great conversation. There are a number of initiatives connected with Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Historic District that we think are a perfect fit for our vision for the Old Courthouse, and really beyond that, for the county and the region. And it's long past due that Berkeley County and Jefferson County were included by an act of Congress in that designation. But we're looking forward to working with them as that moves through the Congress. Any other comments on the budget or background that I may have missed? Good. So if you look at our request and compare it to last year, you'll see that it's basically in the four same sort of categories. Looking at the historic courthouse, the future of the historic courthouse as a destination site, as a museum, as potentially bringing together other entities in the county for office space, visitor center, the convention visitors bureau, certainly the museum commission, and utilizing that first floor of the Old Courthouse, restoring it, and having it as an active place where visitors can come, receive information about our county and our region, also to create a real synergy between other organizations across the county. And I particularly am thinking about our school system, our, you know, nonprofit organizations, our faith-based communities, how that can become a hub to bring folks together and a place for them to strategize, plan, move out in ways that will really deepen our cultural and heritage footprint across, across our county, region. It goes without saying that we have a deep history that has not been, in my humble judgment, been really focused on in ways that it could be. I talked to folks around the county and talked about the 1877 Great Railroad Strike, talk about the burning of the Roundhouse, talk about how the history here in our county, and not forgetting the fact that up until the early 1800s, Berkeley County included Jefferson County and a big chunk of Morgan County. So geographically, the history here is unparalleled. And we view our mission as really looking at that vision, to build on that history, and to make it very relevant for people, particularly school-aged children. How can we bring this history to them, so they feel... How can we bring this history to them so they feel it's connecting with their lives and that they see a groundedness in our place as a place for them to build lives, have jobs, good education, and be proud of where they come from? And that really is a key part of our mission. So the historic courthouse, the first floor, and certainly the second-story courtroom, bringing that back to the days of John Robert Clifford and those legal cases that laid the groundwork around civil rights and around access to a high-quality education for every child. The history there around the Niagara Group that led to the NAACP, the history around those cases that 65-plus years later, Thurgood Marshall used that case law as part of his argument for Brown v. Board in 1954. That history is here in Martinsburg, and it's in that courthouse. So looking at the courthouse, looking at how we can bring it back in a very vibrant way to celebrate that history and build on it, that's our goal and vision. We do have funding in the budget to move forward with architectural drawings, feasibility studies, restoration projects for that building. And we feel that that should include, and because Commissioner Boyd and I were up on the roof, the fact is that there is a cupola that in and of itself has enormous structural and historical value. Restoring the cupola, having a modest budget, and this was in our last year's request, to uplight the cupola so that it will become a real landmark in downtown Martinsburg. It will shine a light on the value of the building. It also will help accentuate the streetscapes, the other improvements that are being made in downtown Martinsburg. So there's a line item in the budget to move forward with that. So with the Old Courthouse, any questions before I move to the next area? The next focus that has been, you know, top of mind for the commission deals with the Norwalk 1914 underslung historic automobile. I know this has been part of the, been on the commission's agenda long before I was on the scene. And as I've gotten to learn more about that automobile, Mr. Trenary, Rick, has been a great teacher around the history of that automobile, what that automobile represents, not just in terms of the ingenuity of the time, but the technological advances that the Norwalk brothers were able to bring to that automobile. That automobile still sits in Washington County at the Rural Agricultural Heritage Center and needs to come home. It needs to come home. So we've looked at a number of options, locations. Went to a number of sites in present. Goettner has been very involved in looking at locations as others have. And we have a proposal that last night and last week, when I met with the Roundhouse Authority Board, talked about some of these options, and last night with the Roundhouse Authority Foundation. Our proposal is to look at the car shop, which is that concrete slab with the steel girding behind the Roundhouse, which had at one point in time been enclosed, to look at the idea of creating a third on that concrete footprint to create an exhibit, a garage that would be exhibit quality to house the Norwalk. The conversations that we have had with the Roundhouse Authority around this idea were really the next steps because we had conversations about opening a museum at the Bridge and Machine Shop at the Roundhouse Authority. That was not accepted. However, that has led to conversations about the car shop. And so there is a budget line item there, which is the most significant, $125,000, to look at enclosing, the design, the feasibility studies, to look at what it would take for a third of that concrete footprint to be enclosed, not to encroach on the space for the farmers' markets and other revenue-generating activities at the Roundhouse, but to use that footprint to create an exhibit for the Norwalk. Will that be its home in perpetuity? There are other options, looking way down the road, that may have the car in another location, but in the interim, it brings it home to Martinsburg. It provides an exhibit space that's open to the public and will also build traffic and excitement about the Roundhouse complex overall. So we view the car shop location as a possibility. Certainly, we will need to do the due diligence. We will need to design studies, feasibility studies. We want to do some community-based surveys, provide an opportunity for people to ask their interest and find out what they would see as, just not focused on the car, but on the Roundhouse as a potential museum cultural heritage destination. Which leads to the other piece of this budget, and that is to look at the East Roundhouse, which, of course, as you know, burned down in 1990. We're looking at ways to look at that footprint and come up with some designs, some funding to totally recreate, rebuild the East Roundhouse and turn it into a museum, cultural center, and a place for education, learning, and research, and bringing back that structure. I was looking at the original architectural drawings of the East Roundhouse. And those of you that were around, that remember it when, before it burned, the fact is, that was a beautiful building. It had a great purpose. We can rebuild that building. This is a major, multi-multi-million dollar project, and it's a multi-year project. So it's out there on the horizon, but not all that far down the road. I think there are ways to raise money, bring partners. It will be a regional project that I think will extend beyond our region. So the East Roundhouse, there is a line item in there where we would use part of the $25,000 that we currently have to bring in some design expertise. And there have been drawings done of that location before, the concept of having an amphitheater there or whatever. Our vision is to have a museum on that space. So, gentlemen, that is where we're at with our budget proposals. I'm happy to answer any questions and look forward to the next steps. And want to thank you all for your really strong interest in this work and to thank the commission as well for their contributions. I want to thank Penny as well for getting this all scheduled and taking care of things. So I know I've used my 10 minutes. Questions, commissioners?
I don't really have any questions. Happy, you know, I appreciate you and your board that has come together to try and showcase our history. That's, we're so rich in our history in this valley, along, you know, obviously with, you know, the Norwalk, but just in general, the rich history that's here that has never had an opportunity to be showcased. And so we thank you for your presentation and thank you, you know, for your consistency of hanging in there. And, you know, we want that car back here. You know, everybody that you talk to that likes anything about an automobile, when you find out that there was a car that's the only one left in the whole world is Washington County. And we're very gracious that they allowed the car to come in and appreciate them, you know, taking care of it. But it belongs here. It does. And we just have to find a way.
Well, Mr. President, I, we're looking forward to continuing conversations. This is the culmination of a year's worth of conversations, site visits, talking to the community, reaching out, and view this. We're more than just stepping up to the plate. I think we've taken a number of swings at this ball, and I think we can hit it out of the park if we can continue to move the conversations forward. Clearly, it's an opportunity that will be a legacy for this commission, our community, and far beyond. Because what we're envisioning will last for decades and decades and decades. And the role of the museum commission, we are proud and honored to be a part of this. Yes, Commissioner?
Is it safe to say at this point, then, that there seems to be no interest in 110 West King Street, which is the old bank?
Right. Well.
That, you know, I mean, if that's the plight of the museum board and the plight of the Roundhouse Authority, then, you know, we need to deal with what we're going to do with the bank, of course. So it seems like the conversation has gotten to a point now where it's safe to assume that that's not going to be of any interest in terms of the future of the museum. Would that be safe to say?
Well, sir, not that it isn't of any interest, if it's of interest to you all. And I'm not punting. I'm just saying that that subject has been explored for many, many months. We've met in that building. The building, 110, has, certainly it's on the historic register as well because of its architecture. It has a new roof that the county committed to, and there was a grant. So there is that piece of it from, and I'm not an architect, but from a square footage standpoint, it, for the vision that we have for the museum, it doesn't have the square footage or capacity. I sit on the county library board as well, as you know, and we're dealing with the asbestos issue at the main library. In fact, I know that Gretchen Frye will be meeting with you all to talk about the library's budget request. But the building itself, from a capacity standpoint, unless we were to consider to use the actual land that the building sits on to extend and build, it just doesn't have the capacity for what type of investment that we're asking you all to consider.
Very good.
Thank you.
Also, I think with some of what we've looked through and done, and a lot of the research we've done over the last year, being able to possibly sell that building and put that money towards things moving forward with the museum, I think building, rebuilding the East Roundhouse is not cheap, but it's a viable option that not only in cases the history of here, but also if we can get big players involved like CSX and some of these people to come on board to help with that, they're more likely to help with something there at the Roundhouse than to help with something at a building over here. If we can bring in partners and bring a state-of-the-art museum down there on the East Roundhouse, I think that really goes a long way to be a better draw for tourism and community and place for schools to come visit and education for children and different things of that nature. So I think it just makes more sense to go that route. And again, we could sell this property over here and use that money towards a start on the other. So it's kind of been the board's consensus, you know? And then, of course, restoration of the courthouse and doing some things there.
Very good. Good. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Chad Weinberger, Deputy County Administrator for the Court Marshal Rank Structure and Pay Scale Discussion. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Been a little bit since I've been up here in front of you guys. Commissioner Hart, I'll give you a warning typically when I'm up here, I'm asking to spend a little bit of money on people. What I have for you all today, as our judicial system continues to grow, more and more demands are being put on that. Currently, our court marshals are providing security in two buildings with one person here as well as the judicial center. As the old jail moves closer to completion to be an existing courtroom, they're going to have to add security to a third building. And then there's the forecasted expansion into the Crawford Building at some point. Looking at that and how court security is set up, Gary and myself have been working closely with Chief Lang to kind of decide and brainstorm some ways that court security can grow as it moves. And looking at the pay scales as they were, there's been a deputy chief court marshal's position on scale for quite a while. That position has not been filled, and in fact, budgetarily had been not, had been written off the books. They had a, currently have a deputy marshal lieutenant who is second in charge next to Chief Lang. And for the most part, those two shoulder all the administrative duties that has to do with the court marshals. And when you start to look at everything they have to do, it is much more than just standing next to a door. They maintain an armory, they maintain certifications for weapons, they write schedules. And Chief Lang has told me multiple times how complicated the schedules get with how the trials are scheduled. It's a large job, and as the service grows and the demands grow, the need to improve the structure is there. Additionally, there's also a group of court marshals, there's four of them who are transportation marshals. We have, since the inception of those transportation marshals, they have just worked under the pay scale of a deputy court marshal. But these gentlemen do above and beyond what the job of a deputy court marshal is. Now, when they're not out doing prisoner transports or transports for mental health reasons, they are working in the court doing the job of a deputy court marshal, but their duties are much beyond that. They have advanced training in prisoner transportation. They have vehicle operations as a regular part of their job, and they are constantly busy and through their hard work have allowed your deputies to be on the road where otherwise they would have been busy doing prisoner transportation. So there is a need to recognize that position above and beyond what the deputy marshal job is. So if you see, you have a pay scale in front of you that shows the current versus the proposal, we're really not moving anything for the first two ranks. We would be inserting the deputy marshal in what would be the third level of the scale. And I've done some very mild adjustments to the progression percentages as it moves through the scale. And those adjustments are just to get this scale inconsistency with other scales that you already have for the sheriff's department, for 911, for firefighters. For whatever reason, the deputy marshal scale had been lacking behind. The percentages and steps amongst raises were much lower compared to everyone else, and we thought it was important to get that up to the same level. This, you have job descriptions attached. This proposal would bring back the rank of deputy chief as a vacant position that we would look to hire. It would also convert what is currently the court marshal lieutenant into an assistant chief and effectively promote the person in that job who has been doing it for quite some time. It adds two pay, two grades to your positions. You'll have seven different grades within your steps, and your total monetary investment would be $143,626. Of that amount, $98,238 is what is set aside for the deputy chief position hired. And I have Chief Lang here with me. So if you all have any questions for myself or the chief.
Mike, you got anything you want to add?
Mike, you got anything you want to add?
My seat is win-win. It's the last first step. We're going to go bigger. We have no idea what tomorrow holds. We had three judiciary 15 days ago, 16 days ago. Still learning. I think it's a big step in the range. I'm blessed to have great staff. I believe you.
Well, I know that with the passing of Ernie, a lot of those duties were split up amongst other staff. I know that Lieutenant Sahonic has taken on a lot of those roles. So it's, it's nice to be able to put people in their correct positions with the correct titles and job descriptions, because I know they've been working outside of those particular job descriptions. So.
I don't know if anybody else on the Commission has any particular questions?
Congratulations. It's been amazing.
Just want to comment, and that is, we had a meeting this morning with Judge McLaughlin, and I have a whole better perspective now on the marshals now than I did before by listening to her talk about it. Gives me a much better perspective on what the responsibilities are. I mean, normally, the general public just walks into your building and sees marshals there and they think, well, that's, that goes way beyond that. Appreciate the job you do. I know they feel safe over there.
Awesome.
Yeah. So being the new guy on the Commission, I do, I do have some questions. So what is your overall amount? How many, how many court marshals do you have? 30?
30, counting transportation.
That's 30, counting transportation, and five of those are dedicated to transportation for... And I noticed that these transportation marshals are new positions. So they, when I look, when I look at the current approved plan, there is no transportation marshals on there. And then I look at the proposal, there is a trans, there's a transportation marshal one and two, I believe.
Oh, it should just be one.
Okay.
They, it is, it is not a new position to the county, but it would be a new position.
To the pay grades, the pay grade is just changing, right? So they've always been there, and they were paid as a regular court marshal, but now they're a transportation marshal, and there's a small bump in that. So, and as I'm looking at the proposed salaries and benefits, I see the bumps from the transport marshals, and the only one that I, and those all seem in order, but I do have to question the assistant chief, and I have no idea what he does, and I could be completely wrong, but that is a quite sizable raise. That's a $24,000 a year raise. So I do question, that is a very large raise for someone to receive at one time. Is this a one, one-time raise, or is this phased in over, over time? I mean, I'm just, I'm asking questions here.
That's fine.
So the purpose of that, Commissioner Hardy, is to, one, it puts the assistant in the equity chamber in all of your job scopes in the county that scale, it puts them where they belong. What you have now is, you've got a lieutenant doing the work of the assistant chief in the wrong grade in the entire scale of the county. So while it seems a lot, the other way to look at it is, they've been assuming a whole nother role responsibility and not being compensated correctly. So it just makes them, it puts their equity and it puts them in the scale in the right spot. We have other assistant chiefs in other areas. That's all this is. It is a relative...
So we're trying, what we're doing, we're aligning this gentleman's salary with comparable salaries already in the county.
Absolutely.
Okay. Right. And this is a question for the council or for the Commission, me being new. Do we typically do these pay alter, alterations in the middle of a budget cycle, or do we typically do these at the beginning? And is this, is this common for us to do this? Like this, you know, in January, we haven't really looked at everybody's budgets and what proceed, what they're going to spend in the next year, and is this something that we typically do?
No, it's not. I mean, typically, you know, we would run it to the end of the budget year, but we have an opportunity here because of some changes in personnel that Mike has went through in the last year to go ahead and, and get this corrected now. You know, we, obviously, with Gary, you know, we're, we are prepared to do this, and it's truly not been fair to the staff of being asked to do jobs that they haven't been compensated for. So we have an opportunity right now to help build his command staff and put people in those positions that have been doing jobs and properly compensate them.
Commissioner Hardy, to address it one step further, you were put on notice by Chief Marshal Lang, Circuit Clerk, Trooper prosecuting, then prosecuting attorney, then the Getty. Knowing what was coming, January 1, last budget season, they said, hey, we're going to try and exist, but coming mid-next year, mid-budget year, we're going to potentially be back here because we've got three new people we have to deal with. Mike's the first one here, only because he knows he gets another building and another judge. So what, to you, as you say, being the junior on the Commission, this isn't new to them. You typically wouldn't go through this gyration mid-budget year, but everyone but you knew it was coming. Chad, in his brilliance with looking at the request for the position, said, hey, wait a minute. We have, we have two other things in here that are broken. We have a lieutenant doing assistant chief job. We have four trip marshal, four trip marshals doing transportation marshals, doing skilled duties above this. What if we look at this holistically? The request is $98,238. For another $44,000, you fix a bunch of broken stuff. So while, yes, it is big, while, yes, it kind of is in the wrong place, not a surprise to these four as much as it is a surprise to you. That's how we got here.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to add, we do this with no AMN staff.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
We do this with no AMN staff.
Right. Because Mike types so fast.
Yes. Well, Penny will tell you, we answer the phones, we answer emails, we get things done.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning your agency. I understand your agency is very important and it serves a very important role, but as being the junior member of this, of this Commission, you know, and, and being a fiscal conservative and a bean counter, I want to know where the money's spent and why we're looking at a $24,000 raise. But if you're telling me that's bringing us in line with other positions in the county, and we have someone who's doing duties above and beyond what they are being compensated for now, then I can understand that. Thank you.
Just the fact we're getting a new judge January 1st, we have to provide another person just to be with them, period. It's either somebody in the marshal's office or somebody from the deputy sheriff's office.
Right, and we want to utilize the marshal's office.
We'd rather use the marshal's.
Correct.
Absolutely.
All right. You've heard the requests from Chad. I need a motion. On the floor.
I move that we pursue this recommendation and make it effective as soon as possible.
A second. Make it effective February 1st.
February 1st.
January, we said 16th, please.
Make it effective January 16th of this month.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have, thank you, gentlemen.
They made it effective fast.
Okay, next up is a discussion on animal control.
Yes, sir. This one is much more straightforward. The, after the last round of hiring, it was brought to our attention through that process that the animal control had mispaid a few folks, and as we looked into it, there was one current employee, the last time your pay scale was moved and established the new minimum pay for animal control, you had one employee who was being paid below that minimum since they moved on July 1 of 2022. You also had an additional two employees who were hired in the animal control since that time who were hired below the grade minimum. The grade minimum for that position is 36,615. These employees have been paid 35,065 during that time. We went back and we calculated, obviously, we want to get them to the grade minimum where they need to be, which is a difference of $1,550, but we thought it fair to also compensate them for the retroactive back pay. We compensated, we calculated that time based on these three employees and the total dollar amount of retroactive back pay to bring everybody back to even, be $9,870 and 32 cents.
Little smaller bite.
I have a question, though.
Yes, sir.
Oh, not to stir pot, but how much now does the city contribute to animal control? Nothing at all.
Yeah, but remember...
Can we revisit that?
Well, don't, don't forget that the city residents that pay taxes are also county residents, so...
I understand, but...
They, they do pay for those services through their property taxes.
So we get their property taxes, not the city?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they pay extra to be in the city.
Okay. I'm one of those.
No extra fee that's paid, that they have to pay to the city for...
Pay the extra sales tax, too.
Yeah, and, you know, you know, better...
Well, I know, but it was to pay something. I didn't know if...
That we've always, we're always, we're, we try to help each other where we can, and, you know, this is a truly a pretty small bite of this particular issue.
Oh, it's not about just this issue. I'm talking about animal control in general.
Yeah. Yeah. No, they, those, those residents are, are county residents and pay their property taxes like everybody else, so.
Fair enough.
Very good.
You'd like a motion for this, sir?
Yes, sir, I would.
So move that we make the, the three employees of animal control hole in their salaries by retroactive. I'll second that. They're properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Thank you, sir.
I want to make another comment, too, publicly on the, John, and back to the marshals. Something else that's happening over the last year that never happened before, but we actually have a marshal now in this facility on the bottom floor every day that we're open, every hour we're open, covering this, and we didn't add any staff members from that group. We just asked him to please staff this area, too, and they've done that over, what, since October or something?
About.
Yeah. And we're going to have that person here, you know, from now on, as part of their responsibilities, not just the judicial center. So that's something we really appreciate that they did without adding another personnel in our respect.
And we're going to add personnel to the new court space, too. We'll be bringing people in.
Mr. Boyd, to, to address your, your statement about Martinsburg, Chief Jones texted me, and just for purposes of clarification, is they, I mean, they, meaning your animal control do not enforce Martinsburg animal ordinances, just the county ordinance. So if Martinsburg any ordinance has ordinances on top of what your rule is, they don't enforce it.
Next up is Gary going over our meeting schedule.
Yes, sir. So a little more housekeeping. We probably should have done that last week with the other two, but just for purposes of clarity and give Mr. Umstead a little direction to get it on the website, he's anxious, is to adopt the meeting schedule for calendar year 2025. It has all of the holidays built in it and so on and so forth, so it's just a matter of housekeeping.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. I'd like to have a motion to approve the meeting schedule.
No move.
Second.
They popped a move and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it.
The last item for me, sir, is a bid recommendation on the ammunition, the RFP ammunition that you opened last week. We, of course, forwarded that to the Sheriff's Department. They reviewed it through their administrative ranks, and we have a memo returned from Sheriff Blair, actually Chief Deputy Burnett, that, and they are recommending the, the most responsible minimum bid, which is in turn the lowest bid. They want to award it to Whitmer Public Safety Group in the amount of $104,798.20, and it is within their budget.
Very good.
Okay.
Amen on the question. If needed.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the ammunition request from the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Properly moved?
Second.
I need a second. Has been properly seconded. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it. Okay. Are there any items from the public? Hearing none? Do we have any need for executive session? No, sir. Thank you very much. Need a motion to recess.
Remove the recess.
We are in recess.
Yeah. Oh, lucky you.